To order the Concord School Committee. Tonight, the first order of business is to elect its officers and make other necessary appointments. It's vibrating a little.
Be back.
Yeah. Let him play with that for a minute. Thank you. This goes on all night with the sound. All good. I think we're good.
Hello.
So I will request that as Concord School Committee member make move the motion to seat the Concord School Committee members by name, which you've already done, so you don't need to do that. Following this, a request will be made for nominations for chair. The Concord School Committee, once the election of the Concord School Committee Chair is conducted, that individual or designee will ask for nominations for a vice chair. There are nominations for chair.
Sure. I'll nominate Carrie Rankin to be the chair of the Concord School Committee.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Want to make the motion to elect Carrie Rankin chair of the Concord School Committee? All in favor? Thanks.
Hi.
All right. Carrie, it's all yours. You'll do better than I just did. I'll perfect it on the regional side.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, what? Now it's you in charge.
See, I thought.
Now you do the vice chair.
I thought we moved on to try a region. Okay, so I will accept nominations for vice chair. And am I allowed to make one?
Nope.
No. Okay, I will accept nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Andrew Hercheck for vice chair of the Concord School Committee.
Second.
All in favor? Is there any discussion?
We should have reversed.
Is there any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Andrew. And now I will.
The secretary.
Do we accept nominations or do I just make a motion?
You're just going to appoint. You need a motion to appoint Erin Higgins.
Okay, so I will accept a motion. I will entertain a motion to name Erin Higgins the secretary.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. I am going to call to order the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. First order of business is to seat the new Concord Carlisle School Committee to elect its officers and make other necessary appointments. I will request that the chair of the Concord, I guess this is correct, chair of the Concord School Committee call for the seating. Do you hear this part, Carrie?
Yeah.
Concord School Committee call for the seating of the Concord Carlisle School Committee and for the election of officers for the Concord Carlisle School Committee. Other appointments can be made at that time if committees have worked out assignments, which isn't on your agenda tonight besides the ones that are listed. The appointments that require a vote in addition to the chair are the appointment of the treasurer and assistant treasurer for the region.
So do I read the motions? Okay, so I will accept a motion.
No, just move it.
Okay, I moved to recognize Alexa Anderson, Andrew Hercheck, Tracy Morano, Cynthia Rainey, and Carrie Rankin as Concord members, and Julie Viola and Brian Waterson as Carlisle members of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now do I do B or do you do B?
You should do all of it, I think.
Okay.
So the chair's name.
So now we need to elect a chair. I will accept nominations for a chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
I will nominate Julie Viola to be said chair.
Second. Oh, I can't second. But plenty of other people did.
You can second. You just can't.
You just can't move it.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Julie.
Welcome to the region.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to move it.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thanks. My joint. You have it. You'll come back here soon. I know, so I can get a little hangry.
Okay.
All right. So now we need to nominate a vice chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
I nominate Alexa Anderson.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All right. Make a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we need to also make an appointment of the school committee recording secretary. Motion to appoint Erin Higgins as recording secretary.
Second.
Somebody needs to make the motion.
Somebody needs to make a motion before we second it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thanks, Erin. Just keep saying thanks, Erin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And an appointment of a treasurer. Make a motion to appoint Allison Lattisi as treasurer of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District.
So moved. Allison Lattisi is her current name.
Thank you. So why don't I make a motion to appoint Allison Lattisi? Thank you for that. As treasurer of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thanks, Allison. Just keep saying thanks, Erin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And an appointment of a treasurer. Make a motion to appoint Allison Brake as treasurer of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District.
So moved. Allison Latizzi is her current name.
Thank you. So why don't I make a motion to appoint Allison Latizzi? Thank you for that. As treasurer of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Allison.
I'm just trying to get back to the agenda now.
Before we move on to the agenda, could I just make a statement?
Yeah, it'd be great.
I just want to offer a very heartfelt thank you to Tracy and Alexa. Over the last two years, you guys have stepped in and made some tremendous changes and created an opportunity for growth in this committee. You have implemented systems that have allowed us to be more efficient. You've set up ways to make our meetings, I think, more productive, a good use of time. We've heard these have gone from getting just really, really long, ongoing reports to like really to the point reports. And I've been able to have really good conversations about what's happening across the district from PK to 22. You've also, I think the biggest thing that I can say about you two is that you've advocated for this school district, for this school committee, and then also for this community endlessly, always with the principle of what's best for kids is what we stand for. And I think I will carry that principle forward as I step into this position, that we are here for children, we are here for students, and you've really instilled that in me. And I'm just grateful for your leadership. I think I speak on behalf of Julie that we have very big shoes to fill, and we're aware of that, and we're just grateful that you're still at the table so we can continue to learn from you and seek your counsel. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Do you want to read the statement?
Yes. So we also have a statement from the Concord School Committee and the superintendent of schools that we wanted to read regarding an incident that happened at last, at our last meeting, May 21st. And I'm just going to read it as it was issued. In the Concord Public Schools, we foster an environment of vibrant debate and discourse where all opinions and viewpoints must be valued. Further, we expect and demand that our students and staff treat each other with dignity and respect regardless of those opinions and viewpoints. Establishing a safe space for debate and discourse is an essential part of creating the curious lifelong learners that are essential to the success of our five-year strategic plan. The expectations of our students and staff are high, intentionally. The school committee believes in those expectations, and we hold ourselves to the same standard. When we invite the public to our meetings, we expect them to meet those same expectations as well. Unfortunately, in a meeting on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, the public did not live up to our expectations. Following a discussion of the name of the new school, one of our Metco representatives was called a racial slur by a member of the public after she advocated for keeping the name of the middle school, the Concord Middle School. Excuse me. In her words, she was, quote, intimidated, hurt, humiliated. The school committee will not tolerate incidents of disrespect in our members in any shape or form. We support the rights of our members to voice their opinions and advocate for their positions without fear of intimidation and harassment. The school committee will not tolerate disrespectful speech of any kind at our meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. In the spirit of putting kids first and supporting our teachers, we know that there's some personal needs coming up, so we'd like to make a change in the agenda. So I will entertain a motion to move the school improvement plans to the top of the agenda so we can cover that next, so our principals can get to family. They have their own children's events. We would like to get them to.
Yes.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. With that being said, we'd like to start with Justin from the Concord Middle School.
Well, should we have everyone? Does everyone come up usually?
They usually come. One, you do one at a time, I think.
Okay.
We're going to have. Does the middle school go first, right? It's always elementary or high school. We're going to have all five go. Just to give you an idea, we're going to have Justin, then Naomi, Katie and Brian.
I think the elementaries are going to come together, they said.
Okay, great. Awesome.
So Justin, Cameron, Katie and Brian.
We just want to make sure you can get to where you need to go. Awesome.
Three chairs for three buildings.
So before you start, let me just, because we have brand-new members at the table, the way we usually bring the school improvement plans, these are the draft plans for 2425. After a lot of iterations of how to do this effectively, we've actually gotten to the point where they don't bring you slides, they don't do a dog and pony show, they are here to talk with you on highlights of the plans, have a conversation, assume you've read them, they're available to the public to read at their leisure, and really have you hear the through lines. You'll hear a strategic plan dialogue all throughout, which is always part of my energy in the day, and hearing that from them, and just hear where their priorities are for the coming school year. So it's a dialogue and pretty informal.
Wonderful.
Hi, Mr. Cameron. Hello.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. Thank you for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Of course. So I'll just give kind of an overview of, so our school council, our school advisory council is comprised of five students, six through eight, five parents, five teachers, and a community rep as well. We're pretty proud of the fact that we have students a part of our school advisory council. That is something that the state mandates for the high school level. It's only recommended for middle school. But since I've come into the middle school, we've been very fortunate to have a lot of students from our student council who is interested in being a part of our school council. So that body brought together some highlights of changes of our school improvement plan for the 2425 school year. Our main focus, of course, is supporting two groups that are overseeing the transition of all of our families, our faculty and staff, to the brand-new building, Ellen Garrison Building of Concord Middle School. And that transition is being supported by a faculty and staff transition team, and it's being supported by a building, student building committee that was brought together about a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago, or about a year ago, was fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Right now, they're fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. And next year, when we move in on February 25th, they will be sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Dr. Hunter and I met with the student building committee just yesterday, and we are meeting with the faculty and staff new building transition team next Monday. So the school improvement plan that you have in front of you is comprised of the plan objectives, which is multiple plans to success, well-being and mental health, inclusive culture, and innovative environment. And those two groups really are asked to have a compass on those four objectives. And when asked, where's our focus in opening the new building, our focus is on those objectives. So the first four underneath the school improvement plan initiatives, you will find foster, voice, and agency of the faculty and staff new building transition team and the students on the new building committee in those four areas. So while opening a new building is exciting, we also need sort of a North Star, and the school improvement plan really allows us to have that North Star of, you know, when we open the new building, is it going to be filled with student-centered work? Is it going to have our faculty and staff and students and families feel a sense of belonging? You know, we're going to be taking words from the school improvement plan, and we're going to make sure that we're not just waiting for the first summer of us being in the new building and waiting for that September. Our goal is when we open that new building on February 25th, the school improvement plan will be really alive and focused on those four areas. The other areas that we sort of doubled down on as a school council is in the area of well-being and mental health. The district piloted Panorama, a survey that was given to faculty and staff, given to students, and given to families as well. School council really had active conversations. It was really the students in school council that were interested in seeing the questions beforehand. They found out through me that Panorama allows you to choose questions, and they really wanted more agency in the questions that were chosen, the questions that they felt were important, that their peers and their fellow students were asked. And the faculty and staff, they really leaned into that area of discussion by the students and said, you know, we would like to have some voice and agency in that as well. So we're really interested in doubling down and focusing on the Panorama surveys. That will be quietly in year two, but kind of off of a pilot year. The second area that was lively in its discussion for the school improvement plan, again, coming from the student perspective, is while the other schools in the district are implementing the bias incident form, we're proud as a middle school to be the school that led the district in the bias incident form, having brought it together and presented at an all-school assembly in spring of 2022. So you see in our school improvement plan that we're actually, as a middle school, going into year three, as a school that has the bias incident reporting form available to our students, to our faculty and staff. And it really parallels and has a great synergy with the work that we do with the playbook. And then the third under innovation is supporting our after-school program, and it being an extension of the school improvement plan. We're very proud to have a very robust after-school program at the Concord Middle School, where each one of these school improvement plan objectives is really its own bucket. We have after-school activities, clubs that can fall into innovation, can fall into well-being, can fall into inclusive culture, and multiple paths to success as well. Again, most of these were really brought forward and put into the school improvement plan from the voices of the students on the school advisory council at Concord Middle School.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments?
What year of the instant bias reform is it? Is it the second or third year?
So we.
Going into the third?
Yep. Going into the third. It wasn't in place the whole 2223 school year. It was a pilot in the spring of 23.
Okay. Justin, one of the things that I liked in your plan, you didn't highlight it, but I'm just curious if you have any more detail on it. I see a piece here about partnering with parents and community members to identify and engage with best practices for student technology, including social media use. I know that that is like massively something on the minds of parents. You know, I think parents have a really challenging time navigating in their households. And I know the high school has had some success with some of their plans. So just because I'm back next year, what does that look like for like the partnerships with parents? Are there some tangible things that you have on the radar that you're thinking of implementing? What will that look like?
Yep. So it's really the action behind this entire plan. And again, you know, the school advisory council at the middle school, somewhere around here, you see equity walks. You know, not only is this a body of five students, five parents, and five faculty and staff who are overseeing making sure it's happening, they're the ones that did the equity walks, those five students, five faculty, five staff. I mention that because in the area of technology, it was school council, school advisory council, that put forward the practice of all middle school laptops shutting down at night and not being available to students at all during the overnight hours. So it was our school council that looked at the school improvement plan in the fall and said, okay, these are all great. What do they look like for in action? And school council went to IT here in the district and said that, you know, it's an Apple device. We're very familiar with the screen time app that can allow a parent to shut down a device of their child's, or even on their own device. Can we do that with our student laptops? And the answer to that was yes. And we implemented that on January 3rd. And we shared with all middle school families that at the 11 o'clock hour, we started at 11, and we're interested in actually bringing that back, you know, to around 10 or so. The question was mostly from the students. We heard from a couple of parents, you know, what if in the middle of a student doing homework at 11 o'clock, if the laptop just shuts off? Then our answer was, then it's working, because no student should be doing homework at 11 o'clock. So we heard great feedback, and the laptop is not available for student use until, I believe, 5:00 a.m. Students are really good at the middle school age in letting us know if they found backdoors a way around. Said policies. I lean into my home base, my advisory, every single morning, especially that first month that this was in place. We also had a very successful parent-student speaker series at the middle school the past year. It was called Who Brought Who? And it was a speaker series inspired by bringing together the parents, the guardians, grandparents, uncles, and aunts with their middle schooler. And it was an audience of middle schoolers and an adult next to them. It was an intergenerational speaker series. And I believe around January, when we put forward the technology policy that all student laptops were shutting down at night and not being available to the kids, we brought in two authors from a Boston Globe article, which was entitled, I believe, TikTok, Instagram, the endless scroll of unhappiness. And those experts spoke in front of about 150 students with their adult next to them. And it was the only time that we saw the audience be divided, when towards the end of the speakers talking, they shared that all parents should be always taking the technology and going through internet history and all of that. So the kids and the parents and the grandparents and the uncles and aunts, they were united up until that very moment.
I see that.
The audience just kind of split in the middle there. It was very good that it was towards the end of the evening. So those are two areas, to answer your question, Alexa, of a focus on technology that we have in here, but we're proud to say we put action towards them.
Great. Was that event on Zoom or was it in person? Just curious.
In person.
In person. It's great to get that many people in the school.
We had a Holocaust survivor, the first one, and I believe November, we had 440.
Yeah.
And then for the technology speakers, the Boston Globe authors, I think we had about 320.
Were these held in the evening?
Yeah.
Held in the evening? Wow.
All in the evening.
During the week or?
Like a Wednesday night or so.
That's incredible. It's really good turnout.
Really successful series, yeah.
Yeah, we had a speaker come in about a month ago to cap off the playbook work. And her focus was how parents, guardians, uncles, aunts, coaches should be talking to students of middle school age or younger about discrimination, bias, all of that. And there was a lot of turn and talk, a lot of engagement that was happening in the audience. A lot of these speakers usually speak to one or both separately, so I have to give it, give credit to the speakers that they were able to kind of pivot and say, we want, this is great, what you're doing as, you know, as a middle school, and we'll talk to both at the same time. And it really allowed the student or the parent to not lose momentum in the important topics, because too often, we inspire our parents at night, and then they jump in their car, and they get home, and their kids are hopefully in bed, you know? And then the busy morning, you kind of lose that momentum. And when you inspire a student during an assembly, you want them to go home and bump into those adults, and sometimes that's lost. So we heard from a lot of parents from the speaker series when they arrived home that that important conversation of whatever the topic was of that evening happened in the car on the way back.
That's great. That's really great. I think one thing I've noticing, and this is like across the board, but I really like is how the school improvement plans are so closely tied to the strategic plan, and I know that's intentional, but I just think that really speaks to the intentionality of like how we're all working towards the same goals and values. But thanks. I think that's really great. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
How do you prioritize? Like, there's a lot of stuff in here, so I'm just wondering, how do you prioritize and track and make sure you're hitting kind of everything? Because I think if you do four of these in a year, like, that's a good year, right? But you've got a lot. So I'm just curious how you think about that. Yeah, we have a lot of different groups, though, that just very organically, even if they don't have the school improvement plan in front of them, we just have so many groups. I mentioned after-school groups earlier that weren't formed or weren't born from the school improvement plan. So what the school advisory council does is we look at this for our first few meetings, and we really get a sense of, okay, who's doing what. And that's why, again, the students being a part of that group is so essential, because they're sharing things that are being done in different clubs, different activities, even some classes. We sometimes forget about the role that the curriculum plays in a school improvement plan. You know, when you look at, you know, how well we're doing when you do an audit, you know, how well we're doing with anti-racism, you know, we have to first look at our curriculum and what's been established, gosh, in a district like ours a decade ago. So we have our students and our faculty and staff really share what's happening, and then we look at the areas, especially of action, very tangible action. And by October, and again, this happened with the two equity walks, that all schools, according to the school, the district initiative, you know, we looked at each other as a body and said, don't look like anyone's taking that on. Shall we just call some meetings in the two buildings? The two worked very well for us, because we have two buildings. And I'm excited to say that, you know, the school council that might roll over to next year is already talking about getting into the new building and doing an equity walk of the new building. That answer your question? Yeah. No, thank you. Of course.
Thank you. Thanks.
Very welcome.
Have a good night.
Yeah, appreciate you guys letting us out.
I was super thrilled you let him go.
Will you get to here?
It's a great band concert.
Oh, yeah, definitely get there. Lori, where are we headed?
Elementary or? Is that all right?
High school. My commute is shorter, so I think.
All right. High school, come on up. Brian Miller and Katie Stahl are your co-principals at the high school.
We can share the mic like we share, you know? We share everything.
We share a lot.
We'll co-mike it. Hey. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Yeah, how are you?
Hey, everybody, welcome. So, you know, we're going to talk about four different major areas of our school improvement plan. So similar to some other schools, we started with our leadership team and reviewed what we had done this year, what has gone well, what was complete, what we wanted to keep going, or the things that we didn't do that we want to just let go of. And then we also talked, spoke with our student advisory council. We did, once in a while, we do like LT brings a student buddy to one of our leadership team meetings, so we spent, we got good feedback from, I don't know, there must have been 35, 40 kids there, looking at different areas, and then certainly feedback from staff and.
And they love to give, they love to give feedback, to be honest. Yeah, and just so you know, our leadership team is made up of all of our department chairs, our wellness coordinator, and our admin team. So we're just going to talk through some of the highlights and some of the new things that we want to build. and some of the new things that we want to build on and continue for next year. So for multiple paths to success, we were able to do a lot of work around curriculum instruction this year, which was really great. We worked with deeper learning and continued our work with Challenge Success. And for next year, we're really hoping to have all of our faculty and staff trained in UDL, Universal Design for Learning, to really help push, to create those authentic, creative, deeper-thinking, learning opportunities for all students and to really, you know, provide entry points for all students and meet them where they're at. So that's one of our goals for next year. And we've also been doing a lot of work with both of our English and math departments. And so next year, we're really going to continue to push the work around looking at the curriculum in both English and math and looking at the vertical alignment, but also the horizontal alignment among grade levels and making sure that, you know, we are talking about common practices more and looking at common assessments and really continuing to build on that work that we started this year. Yeah.
So then two other pieces in this first bucket is we're really looking forward to bringing back Q5. This is, do we know what?
I sent them a link to the webpage this afternoon. You might want to.
Okay.
Quick summary.
Q5 stands for quarter five. It's the last four days of the academic year after finals are over. And then faculty offer a course in something that's sort of their passion in. Could be beekeeping, wilderness survival, kayaking, poetry slam.
Bread making. All sorts of fun things.
Amazing race.
Amazing race.
Yeah. So we're really excited to bring that back. And then we're also going to start working on our Portrait of a Graduate, which is a NEAS requirement, but it's also a piece that I, it is a, it's a nice change that NEAS has gone through. So Portrait of a Graduate is a set of skills and attributes that you want as a school district for your kids to have when they cross the graduation stage. So I, I think that work will really help. There's some things by NEAS that maybe aren't my favorite. This is actually something I'm looking forward to, to doing.
So it's a CCHS graduate, not like a proverbial.
Correct.
Graduate in the US.
As a graduate of Concord Carlisle, what is it that, what attributes or skills should you have when you walk across the stage?
What form does it, like, is it a?
It's so in different districts, it takes different names. You can write a narrative, you can make a poster.
Yeah, it's kind of like a poster.
Yeah, like there can be visuals. It could be really nice in that it can inform a lot of what you're doing. I like your instruction, right? If we're going to say that kids are going to be really good at collaboration, well, then how are we going to make sure they're getting opportunities to collaborate? How are we going to teach collaboration? And how are we going to assess it?
And who like engages in that work beyond the staff? Do kids engage with you?
It's usually a very, so to be, if you look closely, we're looking at like developing the plan to make.
Okay.
The Portrait of a Graduate.
It's a.
You're not doing it next year.
It's not quite strategic plan-like, but it's in a way that you're, you're going to be pulling from every group, like just community members, kids, parents.
Interesting.
And you want to get a head start on looking at it. When do you actually do it?
So NEAS isn't coming for a few years. So we're going to, depending on how it goes for a semester, we're going to really work for a semester to make our plan. And if we feel like we're, maybe start, we'll see.
So NEAS is the accreditation, folks, that we're up. Thankfully, they postponed it. Supposed to be 10 years. I think we'll be at.
12.
12-ish by the time they actually come. So this is the early work to that, 2028, right, Brian?
Yeah.
So this will be the early planning.
So I went on the NEAS website. So why, why, why do we partner with that? They don't seem to be like a division of the Department of Ed or anything, so like.
You want an accredited high school. So the colleges will know you're.
That's right.
It's more than prestige at the high school. It's nice to have a K8. It's necessary to have a high school. They're the accrediting board. It's not Desi, you're right. And we can, we can give you more background.
No, no, I don't need it. I was just thinking like, what's the?
You want to have an accredited high school, so.
There's some really good examples, I'm sure. Over short, we did a nice job. That's who Pretten is now, I forget where. When she was then leading that work, wherever she is now. So, yeah.
We're thinking it will tie in nicely with our work with Challenge Success as well when we've been talking about skills, so.
Yeah. Okay. So under the next pillar, well-being and mental health, we're going to continue to review and look at our guidance and counseling department practice, practices. So this year, with the addition of Flex Block, it was really great for the guidance counselors because they were able to run their seminars with students more frequently all together, which gave them way more opportunities to meet with students in larger groups and just more often. So that was great. And we also are going to, we love to seek feedback from our students. So we will continue to seek feedback from them around how those seminars are going, what information they find helpful, what types of topics they may want to see included in their guidance seminars. And we're going to talk about circles in a little bit. But that was another thing. Our guidance counselors ran community building circles with their ninth graders this year, which I think just was a great pairing for the guidance seminars in terms of having those groups really get to know each other better and the counselors get to know larger groups of kids better in one, in one class period.
When you do surveys, do you get a big sampling?
Yes, we do. We do.
Well, go ahead. We grab a captive audience.
We do it like during, we don't like say like, oh, here's a survey. Fill this out in the next three weeks. We're like, hey, can we take five minutes at the start of Flex? Can we take five minutes at the start of?
For those surveys. And then we do like more, you know, in-person ones that we call like listening tours or round tables where we'll pull kids into Flex Block, so we'll bring them into LT or, you know, and they love that, too.
Okay, so they're statistically significant.
Yes.
Teenagers like to tell us what they think. And then the other one I'd highlight here is we've, if you've been paying attention, we've been focusing on transitions between schools for a long time. And I think we've, we've come to a really good place with ninth grade and ninth grade academy. But we still think we have room to grow for kids that are coming at sort of maybe non-traditional points, like not at ninth grade but coming later. We have so few that come that we think that we can be really individualized and, you know, okay, so Tracy's coming and she's really into radio and soccer. Well, we could find an upperclassman who's into radio and soccer and has Tracy's lunch. And so that, and maybe during Flex, they could be together, at least in the beginning. So.
We have students that do it now, but we just think that it's something that we can definitely improve upon for those students so that they can feel more connected quicker than they have.
Can I ask a question on, are you moving on for mental health?
Yeah.
Before you move on, on the, when you add the survey to students on guidance seminars, beyond like, do you ever, I know there've been a lot of changes to offering mental health services within the school day over the last year in particular, I think. Do you, do you get feedback on how that is going or how you might change that as you look to next year or the years going?
Yeah, I mean, so we, so we signed on to Cartwheel, which is, it's working. I don't know what to say beyond like, thank you for finding the money and it's working.
Kids are using it. Like, we meet with them, you know, every quarterly.
We just signed two kids up today. And it's like, it's a great summer way that they're still working in the summer and our school counselors aren't. And so we can have, that's.
And we can just give a one-minute description of Carp.
Yeah.
Wheel for our new membership. So basically, students are guaranteed within seven to 10 days of being referred to have an intake meeting with the clinician and to start counseling right away with an outside counselor virtually. And they can do it during the school day, on the weekends, after school, whatever that, you know.
And then like many languages.
Many languages. You know, they have diverse candidates or clinicians, excuse me. And it's just worked because of the, they get it immediately. Immediately, meaning they're not on waitlist for months and months and months, like. And we have a whole data dashboard so we can see like how many, you know, how many kids are using it and, you know, what's gone on. They also work with families and parents. So it's been a great addition.
And the, the people are using it and the feedback on like the quality has been good?
Yes.
That's great. That's really great.
Yeah. Okay, inclusive culture. So talk, just building more on the implementation of restorative practices. So this year, all of our ninth graders, so all students engaged, all students in the school engaged in a community building circle in their English class. Our ninth graders have had them in English class, in science, and in guidance. So they've had a lot. But so our goal for next year is for all students to engage in a circle once a quarter. And, am I in the right one, right? Yes. And then the other piece that we're really excited about is hopefully training some of our coaches and athletes in community building circles. Because again, like we've, this model has worked really well for high school students. It kind of gives them a place to have to talk to each other and share about themselves. And it's just, it's worked. And so we saw a need for it or some, or we saw an opportunity, I would say, for it in, in some of the sports teams where we feel like, you know, there's great leaders on the team and there's some students who may need, you know, some more confidence building. So we thought that this would be a great way to kind of incorporate circles into our athletic programs. And we have some training that we're going to offer over the summer for coaches who are interested. That's great.
And the last piece I'd highlight there is I'm sort of creating this greater sense of responsibility for everybody in the building to be, to own it, right? To clean up your mess and to throw things away. And it's not just on our custodians and our building service. So we are going to, next year, require all students for one of their Flex Blocks, they have 50-something over the year, that every kid has to do one where they're giving back community service that's on campus.
In the building.
In the building.
I love that.
Yep, so they can work with, you know, the food services or the custodians or just do a beautification project of something or, you know, something where they're really putting their care into our physical community, into the space and taking pride in it.
Awesome.
That's awesome. I love it.
Yeah, we're really excited about that.
And then the last piece is under the, that we'd highlight is under the ninth grade academy. We did a lot of work with Adam Hickey from Landmark. He really came on as part of a lab consultant. But we also have looked at what are some common instructional practices that we think should be evident in all ninth grade classes? Maybe we'll look at scaling them later. But the idea is that, so some of the instructional practices are, if you go to my, my class and Katie's class, kids are not having to spend so much mental space just trying to figure out what to expect in each class and that they're more able, there's more space left over for them, for them learning. So we're also talking about some instructional practices such as, they're simple, but they're really effective, like reverbalizing information, cueing the midpoint. I think we have some folks who say, you know, our ninth graders, they just stink at taking notes. Well, did we ever teach them to take notes? Like, when was, when was like, like, maybe Justin could tell me. Even if they learned in, in fifth grade or sixth grade, like, right? That's not the same as trying to do it in high school, so.
And if everybody's doing the same method, it helps with the cognitive load of them from shifting from one class to the next, knowing like, okay, I know what the method is going to be from science to math to social studies to English.
Those are what we wanted.
Those are our highlights that we wanted to share with you.
Maybe just, hi, I'm Julie. I haven't met you.
Hi, Julie.
Nice to meet you. Maybe just, first of all, maybe a comment is, it was really impressive. Thank you for, for doing that. A lot of really great stuff. Just a couple of questions. I know that there's a lot of focus nationally on these middle skill jobs, so more than high school, less than college. And I love what you had to say about alternative success. Have you put any thought into that? And you don't have to answer tonight, just maybe food for thought. And then I think the second one, and actually Carrie and I were talking about this earlier, is anything around AI, natural language processing, machine learning? The job, obviously, landscape has changed. Brian and I have spent a lot of time in Carlisle talking about technology, looking at different grants that are out there. Just because the, the needs of, obviously, of the next high school graduates is going to be very different than even three years ago. So anything around that, would, would love to hear more about it. Not, like I said, not necessarily tonight, but.
Well, for the alternate paths, we've, we had two alumni panels during the course of this year that we will absolutely continue, where I think that most high school kids expect their path to just be this perfectly straight line where, right, I'm going to go here and I'm going to go here and I'm going to go here and nothing's going to go wrong. And we brought, like I said, two different panels back where, you know, students experience setbacks and struggles. And they offered their experience and how did that? And they all sort of ended up in a great place and they were happy and they were doing different things. And it probably wasn't what they were thinking they were going to do maybe when they left CC. So I will continue to build on those. And we've also started to bring back some more. So we did college fairs in person again after COVID. But we also, we've done armed services. We're going to do trades again next year as well.
They were huge. Yeah, we had the reality fair recently.
Yeah.
We're student, do you want to talk about that or? Did you know what it was? You were like.
I, well, I saw it.
I think you were just saying what it was.
Yeah, you should tell them.
They'll enjoy. So, I mean, so basically, it was for seniors and students had different opportunities to like, learn how to budget this or like they would meet with Verizon and learn about different things around.
Horizon, because we couldn't get a Verizon.
Sorry.
We had to get a fake.
Kind of like having them start to think about like the real world and like what life is going to look like through a varies, through different activities during a Flex Block.
And then there was the Wheel of Misfortune. Like sometimes like somebody would spin and, oh, your dog had to have surgery. Like, where are you fitting that $1,000 in?
And then lastly, on that one, I'll just say, like, I think tomorrow, yeah, today's Wednesday, Job Corps is, so Job Corps is one that, you know, for some students, that's a path that, you know, that fits their goals best, which is great. And they are starting a new dual enrollment program that they're having an info session on tomorrow. So we're sending like two counselors and a teacher to just learn about it so that we can still make sure that we are like addressing, you know, all the different areas and making sure that there's a path for every kid. Because not every kid is going to go to.
Nor should they. It's not for everyone.
There's so many opportunities out there. So just making sure that we're staying in the know about those and bringing them into school.
And yes to AI, but we don't know the answer.[1584.04] And yes to AI, but we don't know the answer. I think we're learning like shoulder to shoulder.
Let us know if you find out the answer. Really empowering, I think, to have kids embrace it as a tool, right? And not as, as, as an answer and as a crush, you know? Because I think that's the best lens to have for it. So.
Absolutely. That's great. Thank you.
I have a question. When you were discussing English and math department curriculum, you talked about vertical alignment and horizontal alignment for the lay folk. What, what, can you explain to me what a vertical alignment in curriculum might look like? As if I'm 10. And similarly to the horizontal alignment and do these lines ever intersect? Like what does that mean?
So like vertical alignment would mean that we don't teach you addition seven times and you never learn subtraction. Right? That would be like, if I'm really being simple, like that we're, are we teaching all the standards and are we covering them all in appropriate?
And are we, and are we building on the skills from ninth to 10th to 11th and 12th? Are they increasing in rigor? Are we expecting more from, you know, the writing process and?
And the English standards are interesting because they're actually not by grade. Their English standards are nine, 10, and 11, 12. So it's sort of making sure that who's going to teach which of nine, which grade nine, which one are you going to do? Which grade are 10 going to do? And I think we're also looking about opportunities for movement in levels that you're able to, if, just because you entered the high school at one level, like you should be able to get to all math classes. So we're looking at that.
And then for horizontal alignment, just, you know, an example is just having, you know, 10th grade English teachers, like what are we all doing the same? What all students are getting, you know, having similar experiences, no matter what teacher, you know, we may teach with autonomy for certain things, but these are the books we were reading, these are the skills, these are the practices across grade levels.
And I imagine there's more latitude in ELA than math? Or is there comparable? I mean, I haven't seen, like, teachers can choose, for example, like the, the books they read to some extent. I know people are reading different books in different sections, but would, what would that look like in math? If you're all taking enriched geometry?
It would be hard if no one ever taught, right? If we're both teaching mathematics, we have to teach integrals, right? If we're doing calculus, then we have to get there.
But that's where like common assessments, right? Like may come in so that, you know, we're looking at how we're assessing all kids in that math class and seeing how they're all performing on the same, on the same problem.
And we're looking to have more common assessments in English that, I think that we have work to do on really clearly, we want to clearly identify the skills that we want every kid to have at the end of ninth grade, at the end of 10th grade. And English, the standards are tricky. Like you talk about like argumentative writing for nine years. So what, what does that look like? How does that grow from third grade till 12th grade?
And like if, if you have three sections of like enriched geometry that are taught by three different people, can they, can, so you've got nine, no, not 90 kids, you've got 60 kids over three sections, could each of those kids take different tests at each?
No, I mean, that's the idea that we want to be.
That's what we're thinking, the common assessments. Cause then you can look at like the questions and the skills and then run it through and see like where are we, what are we doing well? What are, like what areas do we need to go back and reteach? And maybe it's different from one class to the next, but they all have, you know, they're all being assessed on the same things.
And why did my students do, why did Katie's kids do so great on standard 2.5 and my kids struggled a bit? Like, so what, how did you teach that, Katie? And what could I do to fill in the holes for my students?
Well, thank you.
I, I really like the extension into athletics. I think a large, a large portion of students do athletics. And I know like for me at CCH, it was a huge part of my experience. I, I like that and probably opportunities to do more going forward.
That's one of my most exciting things, like mine in here.
Yeah. I mean, it's less, less formal than classroom setting, right? And you have different, you know, coaches. It's great.
It's still such a huge piece of their school experience.
Totally. It's a lot of time.
It's like the most.
Or it's why they, that's their draw.
That's what gets them to school.
And unrelated, I, I don't have any kids at CCHS or, or family, but I got like five texts that it was an awesome graduation.
Well, we worked really hard on the weather, so.
Thank you. My fourth grade chorus concert son, singing son will be very happy that I can make it tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the elementaries are going to come up together and talk on what they do that's in common and what is individual teach building.
This is a varsity sport, okay?
Yep. We're building the teams as we go here.
Good morning.
Danae McCrackus, principal at Alcott, Justin Sparks is principal at Thoreau, and Matt Lucy is principal at Willard.
You guys share or?
Yeah.
We can share. Oh, we're good.
We can get through.
Thank you. Thanks for the, that's loud. Thanks for the invitation tonight. Congratulations to the new chairs and new members. Thank you Tracy and Alexa for all your service.
Justin was a school committee member for six years.
You know this trail. You know this.
He means that.
Thank you for your service.
I think it was last year, right around this time where I was coming to meet all, most of you.
Yeah.
It is. One year. I call my fast Cynthia.
Justin's introducing his first year with us for those of you.
It's been a really positive experience. A testament to the collaboration, I think, in large part with my colleagues here, Matt and Naomi and the larger leadership team and under Dr. Hunter's leadership especially. It's been a really positive year. So, thank you. So you'll notice that our school improvement plan is, is unified. And that's again intentional, you know, for alignment sake, but there'll also be some, some differences as well based on our school needs. And I feel really low right now in this chair.
No, you have some.
It's okay.
It's a low chair.
So I'll just go through a couple here and then Naomi and Matt. So the first strategic objective is multiple pathways to success. And if you remember the last time we were here, we were here with our reading and ELA specialists talking about the new updated K to three literacy plan, which we're all really excited about. Some fantastic new programs. They're going to go a long way in meeting the needs of our, all of our students at a tier one level in terms of their foundational skills, Haggerty NGOs and foundations, et cetera. DIBELS as well as our assessment system. So we always say you have to inspect what you expect. So DIBELS is one measure that allows us to do that, seeing where our readers are through the MTSS process and getting them the support they need through intervention. So one of our goals this year is to make sure all of our teachers K through three and support staff as well have a deep understanding of how to administer the test, how to interpret the results, and then how to act, how to plan small group and whole group instruction around the needs of our kids. So that's something we're all focused on next year. It's a unified goal. Strategic objective two is wellbeing and mental health and kind of ties into that. We have a really robust MTSS system for identifying struggling readers and mathematicians as well. But for social emotional learning, it tends to be more of in the moment and anecdotal, right? So for our counselors and our mental health teams, it's a teacher referral sometimes or a parent referral or teacher, student dropping by during office hours, which is fine and great and goes a long way. But we want to be a little bit more strategic about that. So it's about aligning and integrating the SEL work with some of the academic work we're doing for our MTSS model. And then for Thoreau, a little bit more specific, something we, we started this year is we've been having regular monthly all school meetings. Dr. Hunter's been a part of many, if not all of them, which have been great. It's a disparate of your classroom morning meeting. So greeting, share activity and some news and announcements. So we do this with 400 plus kids in the cafeteria and, and all staff, which is tough and even some parents. So it's, it's tight. The last one we had was about 100 degrees and, and tight. But it's, it's a way to celebrate successes. You know, we, we integrate themes, we celebrate diversity, you know, and, you know, based on what's going on in the classroom, each grade level has a chance to share out some of the things that they're working on. So it's been really positive. So we're looking to double down on that next year and even hopefully involve the parents in the larger community a little bit more. I should say, I've been getting a little bit more adventurous with these and I shared with, with Lori. For our activity last time, I had a great categories activity that involved a beach ball. So if you can imagine a very large beach ball being tossed around by 400 kindergarten through fifth graders. It didn't go, it didn't go well, but.
You live and learn.
And then probably the most exciting for me connected to strategic objective for innovative environment is we just went through a feasibility study and CHA came here and presented their initial findings and recommendations. So that's everything from safety and logistics to enhanced green space and play space for kids. So we have the opportunity now to start on a playground project, which is, I think, every principal's dream. So we have a really.
Carlisle inspired. I'll shout out to the two new folks.
I'm not sure we'll get that.
Brian was on the chair.
Brian's available to you.
He's the brainchild at the Carlisle.
You look familiar. Yeah.
We lived and breathed that for a couple of years.
Brian has been really helpful. He took us through his process, start to finish, the team's process, start to finish, and really gave us a lot of, a lot of great ideas. So we're off and running. It's a, it's a great team. We're looking to hopefully bring a school committee rep on if anyone's interested in order to, to calibrate and make sure you're all in the loop on this. But really exciting. It's going to be, we've talked about priorities so far. So we're looking at making it accessible for all. It's sort of set back in the woods a little bit near the, near the river. So it's a little bit more naturalistic in the spirit of Henry David himself. So it's, yeah, we're in the works and I look forward to coming back and giving you an update on that. And that's all I have.
I have the privilege of talking about all things responsive classroom. And so you'll see that responsive classroom is something that shows up sort of splattered about objective two and three around wellbeing, mental health and inclusive culture. And so responsive classroom, if you do not know, is something that we started piloting last year. And it's really, it's an approach to leading a classroom that sort of prioritizes building connections, building community in your classroom, being really responsive to student needs and sort of letting your knowledge of the individual child guide the decisions that you're making in terms of classroom management, in terms of instruction. And so we've been doing that for a year. Last, and so what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that are common in our plans. And then I'll talk a little bit about a couple of things that are specific to Alcott. So last year we had said that for the first year we were doing it, we were going to aim to get 15% of our staff trained in responsive classroom. The training is pretty intense. It's a four, full, four full days out of the classroom. And we ended up doing much better than that. I think people who, we had about 30 or 40% of, of staff who got trained last year. So we are hoping to have 60% of our staff trained in the upcoming year. Something else that you'll see in common is that we plan to use PD time or faculty meeting time to go deeper with the training. So to, to look at things like teacher language, like how, how do we redirect students? How do we reinforce? How do we remind? And then we have, every school has teacher leaders, so responsive classroom teacher leaders. And so they are going to be leading, they're going to be leading a lot of this work with the building principals. But they are going to be leading some book clubs next year. Responsive classroom has a, has a, has a lot of books and we've identified a couple that we want to drive our work. And then something else that's common between the three schools is that we have a committee looking this summer to map out the first six weeks of responsive classroom for, for teachers. So we were sort of looking at it's, you know, our goal is to get everyone trained, but it takes time. We can't just send the entire school to a four day training all at once. And so we, we've been trying to figure out how do we move forward and get certain things in place in all classrooms, even though we know that it's going to take us several years to get everyone trained. And so this work that our responsive classroom teacher leaders are doing this summer to, to map out some supports that we can give to teachers and even just some lesson plans for how they can run their morning meetings, to get a couple of things in place in all classrooms, regardless of whether people have had that training yet. So making sure that we're giving them the resources that they need to be able to do it successfully while also recognizing that it will just take some time to get everyone trained. So those are some things that are in common across the three buildings. A few things that are Alcott specific. So one thing that we're doing is really focusing on sort of our tier ones. So, so we're sort of doing a, we're going back to our school values. We sort of forgot what our values were over COVID. But so we're, we're really looking at our school values and mapping out what our expectations are for, for, for shared spaces. It was actually listening to the high school talk about what they're doing. It sounded really similar. Our, our focus is on the bathrooms a little bit, like please do not flush things down the toilet. And, you know, what, what, I joke, but not really. So our, what, what we're trying to do is come up with some consistent shared expectations for common spaces for sort of what it means to be an Alcott student. And then really explicitly teaching those, which is very aligned with responsive classroom. And so that's one thing that we're doing. Something else that we're doing is we are working with the district's consultant to develop some vertical alignment for our SEL program. So we have the branch program at Alcott. It's a relatively new program as far as programs go. We've only had it for five years. And so part of the work is looking at the structures that we've put in place and improving them. But the other part is making sure that there's consistency K to 12. So we know what we're doing at Alcott, but this is letting us learn about what the middle school's doing, what the high school's doing, and making sure that we're providing a continuum of services K to 12. I have so many arrows drawn on my notes that I am, let's see. Oh, well, this is, this is not related to branch, but the one other thing we're doing in terms of schoolwide expectations, we have a group that's doing some summer work around that as well, pulling sort of lesson plans that teachers can use to, to very clearly teach students like what, I keep using the bathroom example because we just spent a lot of time recently with, with cleaning up the bathrooms. But like what does it look like? If you're leaving the bathroom better than, than when you came into it, what does it look like? And resources that teachers can use in their classrooms to really help, very similar to what the high school was saying, but to really help kids develop a shared sense of responsibility for their community. I'll stop there.
We intentionally made Matt go last because nobody wants to follow.
Running joke.
That's true.
Go after Matt.
No, no. So I was thinking as we were listening to the middle school, the high school and now Naomi and Justin, and those of you who've been around for a while and been in schools for a while, there's the idea of mediocrity, excellence and unconscious and conscious. And what we're fortunate here is that we're thoughtful and we're consciously doing work that will achieve excellence. And so what you've heard today is each of us doing our own work. I'm going to take just a minute to talk a little bit about how the work we're doing parallels each other. And in some ways, one will go ahead and be a pilot in, in an area and while others are working in separate areas. So the beauty of having three parallel elementary schools is although we're not lockstep, there's a similar experience in each building and we're building off the excellence of our colleagues. So Naomi mentioned the work and Justin did as well with our MTSS work, our multi-tiered systems of support. Each building is doing it and doing it well, but we recognize because we'll, we'll always stay humble and never get complacent, there are things that we can learn from each other that can improve our practice. So we're going to be investing in that this summer across all three buildings. In each of our buildings, Naomi mentioned the first six weeks, we're all doing that work and then sharing that work because we're all invested deeply into responsive classroom. Another that is just simply extraordinary is through your funding of the schools, we're able to train this summer 32 staff members in the Wilson reading system, right?
Wow.
In other districts, right? You may have three, right? We're going to have 32. Now why is that important? Because that's the first step to being certified as a Wilson teacher. That's the, that's the means of making a difference in a child's life through a systematic approach to reading instruction. Right? So not only is it important at Willard, we've got the lab program, but it's also just as important in our two other schools and then going up the ladder. We've got, we sent out the, the call, we've got people coming from the high school to take the Wilson training this summer. All those people who take the training are then eligible to take a practicum anytime over the next five years and be Wilson certified. So while the rest of the country is wrestling with those students who have not been identified and if identified, what to do, we here at Concord are putting our, your proverbial wallet where it counts, right? And our staff are anxious to do the work. So thank you for all of that. And with that in mind, I gotta say to Bob Conry, who's always one phone call away when we're looking for funding. And we have some friends from the Concord Ed Fund tonight, whom I'm going to be referencing just a second. The willingness to resolve a problem with collaboration, with some flexibility, Lori's connection to those decision makers in the state who have been supporting the work of our newcomers at, at Willard is extraordinary. So all work being done, the, the heavy lifting is all being done by our staff. We get to sit on their shoulders and help and, and sing their praises. But again, it goes back to all of you who do the work to come here regularly and support us. So we're all grateful. So speaking of our different programs, as I mentioned, we have a lab program. And to ensure that, again, not to sit back and become complacent, we recognize that there are multitudes of learning styles and multiple needs. So not all students who have a language-based disability would fit within a traditional model. So what we've done is working with, you heard Adam Hickey's name come up earlier. Adam is a tremendous resource. He's been working with, in multiple districts. He's now working with us and we have developed a lab B program, which would be for a particular profile of student. And that program starts this year. The number of students that we're supporting in our lab program has grown fourfold since it started. So we're doing good work and the, the proof is in the pudding. These students, we know because of our progress monitoring, because of our benchmarking, are becoming readers. And for all parents and all students, there isn't a better goal. Secondly, through grant funding, again, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Lori. From the state, we're hiring an additional adjustment counselor. And the additional adjustment counselor is going to help us primarily support and implement trauma-based informed practices. Many of our newcomers come to us with a great deal of trauma. And it's our responsibility, it's our passion to take care of them. And that's what we're going to do. We also have, I tell you, this job is the best in that you always are learning, right? You all probably have great jobs that you do, right? I think ours is a job which, to live a life of consequence, this is, what you do is you provide us with opportunity to live a life of consequence. So when Lori turned to me a while back and turned to some of the others who have had students come from the emergency shelter, that was our opportunity to rise, right? So, you know, we've learned so much and we've stayed humble. What we're now adopting is.
You did rise, to be clear.
Well, we're doing our very best, right? Every day it's another new challenge and we're happy to have it. So the Sheltered English Immersion Program, what that enables us to do, and we've hired a teacher, we'll be hiring a teacher for that, we need to have the same high expectations for all our learners, right? And there may be variables that we don't usually encounter with some of our students who we have with us presently. What we need to do is be more creative and have more horsepower. And a Sheltered English Immersion teacher will enable that. So for example, if my friend Justin is new and he's a newcomer, and I'm teaching him in class, I'm giving him the curriculum for that grade level in English. What he needs is probably. that grade level in English. What he needs is probably a good double dip of that, right? So we're not dumbing it down, right? We're not making excuses. We're not thinking he's disabled. We're not doing anything other than providing him the best opportunity to meet his, his goals as a learner. So that person will work with our, our ELL teachers and still have access to our MTSS programming. And we have a wonderful person who is on staff already, who's going to be coming over to support us, who is a wealth of knowledge. And we talked about the Casanova's three-prong test. So within the SEI world, you know, is it educational theory that's sound? Is it effective instruction? And are the students showing growth? And so that will be our litmus test for this program. You heard from Naomi also about the, the Responsive Classroom book clubs. Thanks to my friends at the Concord Ed Fund. They have been, they funded some additional literary resources for us, recognizing that 15% of our students in some manner have a disability, academic disability or otherwise, and they often don't see themselves represented in the literature. This will be an opportunity for our teachers to do the good work of identifying the texts, reading them, understanding them, finding where they might best lie, then sharing it as a pilot first at Willard and then out to the other buildings. So thank you to the CEF for supporting that, and that'll be some work that'll be done this summer. And then I'm going to end with the alignment with the high school. As some people here in the room know, there are fifth graders do service projects at Willard as part of the fifth year, sixth year, fifth grade year at Willard. And what we're going to do is we're going to pilot and then share the information with the two other schools about having it be a continual community service project throughout the year. Every single month, they will have an opportunity that'll be tied to the frameworks in which they will be providing service that addresses human and community needs. So it won't be just a one-off, but rather a continual investment. And we think that it will be important for their own well-being and the well-being of the community. On the day that we were going to do the community service events the other day, it rained, right? And the question was, what do we do? And the answer was, service doesn't wait for a sunny day, right? So they went out, and did they have a great time?
They had ponchos, and it mean like, it's, it's extraordinary that, it was like, it's been their favorite part of fifth grade celebration so far. I'm sure it will only get better, but it's extraordinary. They are so excited. And I forget, but you gave them agency, so there were many, many projects to choose from, each a little different. So for more physical kids, they were, you know, at gaining ground or on the rail trail. Artistic kids were able to do bulletin board projects, the Council on Aging, I think, or, so I mean, even that is thoughtful, right? Even what we are allowing these kids to choose, they see themselves and pick what makes them feel comfortable and empowered, so.
And again, you would see that in every single one of the elementary schools. And again, how fortunate we are that we have three parallel schools where we get to learn from each other and support each other. Do you have questions for us?
Go, take a nap, now.
You know, you guys are amazing. And I wish I had kids in the elementary school, but I don't.
Constantine, you need a microphone.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, each school is different, but I like the fact that you recognize the differences and collaborate to try to make some things similar enough so that the kids sort of speak the same language when they leave you in fifth grade. Yeah, so, thank you.
I had a question about Responsive Classroom. So is there a teacher, teachers training teachers type of model, or do they have to go to an offsite to do the four days? Do you do any training in-house of like, with the teacher leaders that you referenced?
So right now, the, the initial training is offsite, or onsite. We bring a trainer here.
Trainers to here.
What the teacher leaders are doing is helping with implementation. So like, they, they were trained two years ago and have sort of done the advanced training. And so what they might do is offer to go and like, co-lead a morning meeting with you, or to problem solve with you, or to plan professional development that goes deeper on specific topics. But right now, it's, it's an offsite training.
Okay, okay. And then Wilson, I mean, I, I can't echo enough, I mean, I am a Wilson teacher. I haven't done it in a long time, but I think that like, people don't realize having 32 teachers that are actually going to get training is exceptional. I mean, I worked in a school with similar sizes to your schools, and I was the only Wilson-trained teacher. And then two more came along, but that was it. There was no more funding for that. So the fact that we're putting those programs in place to really close those gaps for those kids that need the Wilson is really just exceptional. And then, I guess lastly, I'll just say, you know, Matt, you said something about building off excellence at the three schools. It has not always been the case that our three elementary schools have been aligned. And I feel like I'm like the old lady of, you know, the school committee here, that I remember they're all very different. So your kids had very different experiences at all three schools. You could move across town and really have the same experience at any one of the schools. So that, I think, is just a huge positive for Concord. And I think, you know, this is my, actually my favorite night of the year, seeing all the principals here and seeing all of you together, and what you do at the elementary school, then how that transitions to the high school, and the middle school, and then the high school, is just really impressive. So thank you for all you do. I know that June is a tough time. Please pass on our thanks to Brian, Katie, and Justin, because I do think that, you know, it is hard to come here in June. It is the worst time of the year for teachers and administrators.
It's for families. It's hard for-
It's hard for families. But, you know, you have the, the same energy in June that you had in September, so thank you for that.
I have a couple of questions, but does anyone else have any questions?
We let Naomi go, so she might-
Go. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I had just a couple of questions. One was on, to echo what Alexa was asking, the middle school, the technology use. There was, I feel like even in my five years in elementary school, the amount of technology, not even used in the classroom, but like, that's brought into schools, has, has changed. Whereas like, you don't even, in my, I never even thought about kids having cell phones in elementary school, but it seems to be like, Apple Watches or cell phones are finding their way into schools. So in this, I noticed on all three of yours that you have training parents and families on the use of technology. I'm curious if you talk about that, or how you talk about that with families and with kids also.
We had a, recently, we were fortunate enough to have Ms. Greer come in and talk to our kids about internet security and safety, and that went a long way with our, our upper elementary. It's, it's, it's more problematic on a day-to-day basis than you might think. So with the smartwatches and with the phones, we do have a policy where they, they're allowed to bring them in for after-school plans, obviously, but they put them in their backpacks afterwards. And we address these things in, you know, grade-level meetings and assemblies as well. So for parents, I think there's still more work to be done next year on, on educating our, our families in, in terms of speakers. But, yeah, we, we notice that it is, it's something to consider.
My other comment is more of a comment, but I feel like across the board, from like, pre-K, or we didn't hear too much about pre-K, but K to 12, at least tonight, there's this commitment to community. And I feel like, I, I just think that's so important. I love the, this notion of community service and the pilot that you're implementing. And I love to see that. Like, I mean, I think it'd be so amazing if like, that was just part of your entire K to 12 education, was community service was not an option, but an expectation. And then connection, like, with Responsive Classroom, with the community service pilot. I just feel like everything is about building not just smart kids, but like, good people. And I think that really shines in, in all of these school improvement plans. So the thoughtfulness on all of that, I'm just really excited about and inspired by and grateful for. So thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
So I'll end with, that idea goes back to Responsive Classroom about, and in our model, at our school meetings, it's, you take care of yourself, you take care of your neighbor, and then you take care of the world. And then we build on that throughout the year. So again, we have that thread that binds all three schools of using Responsive Classroom and that same theme. And, yeah, the activism of, you know, community-based, you know, investment in each other. And the kids, the kids rally to it. So it's not-
We saw it. I mean, when, when, when they came and did that demonstration here, it was so, like, everyone, you could, there wasn't like, everyone was smiling and laughing and having a good time, learning about other people. You know, it was just really, you can feel it.
Yeah, agree.
Thank you.
Every night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much.
Enjoy the summer.
Yeah.
Lori, before we move to the next item, anything closing comments from you?
I mean, I just sit here every year when they come through and take it all in. At a, kind of a rare opportunity to just listen. And I think they speak for themselves on who they are as leaders, what the staff is focused on. We're all in the same direction here. And as you can hear, the vertical threads as they come up through, and, you know, it's all going really well, and we're doing a lot of really great things for kids. And I think this group, I hope, spends the next year talking more about kids than you have been lately. And we can bring you more of some of what they've referenced at a deeper level, because that was, that was a high-level view, obviously. But there's some really fantastic work going on, both academically, emotionally, innovatively, and I think the sky's the limit. Like, they come to me with all these new ideas. I'm like, sure. Of course, when they want money, we have to juggle that a little bit, but we do, and try to reallocate. Usually, they know they have to give something up if they want something else. Just a really strong team, and I'm glad they, I think, spoke so well on behalf of all their schools and all the folks working so hard.
Absolutely.
How often do the principals get together, like formally?
Yeah, we meet weekly as a leadership team, two hours every Tuesday morning. And we've worked really hard to go deeper than do a lot of logistical stuff. So we tend to do that. And that's the spoke that keeps us glued together. I mean, I guess I sort of do it in between meetings, but that's the spoke. That meeting is so important to us as a team, so that we can talk on all the things you heard. I mean, and, I don't know, as someone who has had kids in the school before your tenure and after your tenure, you spoke a little bit about this, what has been an interesting experience even as a parent. And obviously, my level of involvement with the schools has increased over time, so I do have a, you know, sharper lens on this. But you can see that. You can see, I believe, the tangible results of two hours a week with that leadership team. It is, it is truly different. And to your point, you know, if you had a child move from Thoreau to Alcott 10 years ago, they might as well have been moving to Siberia.
I mean, I bought a house based on that. I literally was switching houses, and I'm like, well, I can't leave Alcott. Like, that's it.
I remember, I remember transitioning from nursery school to elementary school when Thoreau School was sort of in this phase of chaos. And this was only a few years before you arrived. And people would say, oh my God, you're, you know, your child's going to kindergarten. Are you looking for a house? And I would say, what do you mean? Well, you're going, you're, you're, you're in the Thoreau District. Are you guys moving? I'm like, oh my, like, what a bizarre question. So, you know, now, no one knows where to move. They're all exceptional. There's, there's none of that. My mother's a Realtor, that, you know, she used to say, you know, years ago, people would have a preference. There isn't really any of that anymore. That's great to hear. It trickles down that far. That's a big deal. It is intentional. And the good, you know, the collaboration feeds itself, right? So they're all, everyone's benefiting from it. And getting K to five teachers in the room together across all three schools, we have to acknowledge there are different places on some things. And how do we all get to some common, common things that we're all going to expect?
There aren't many left of us that have been around for both a long time.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move to public comment. So just like we've been doing for, before my time here, public comment period will be a period of 20 minutes. And as a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you are in the room and you would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me, and you will be called to speak. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. When called to speak, please state your name and address before you speak. We will go, every other, starting with a comment in the room, and then taking a comment on Zoom. And you will have a time limit of three minutes. So with that being said, is there any public comment?
I have one.
Oh, thank you.
No, just the name, Constantine Levine.
Oh, okay. We have one comment, Constantine Levine. Sorry about that. I'm new here. Come on over here. Yep.
My, Constantine.
So go to that line.
Yeah, perfect.
Hi, I'm Connie Levine. I live at 149th Stowe Street. And I'm here to talk about one guest, Ellen Garrison. There's just a few items that I want to talk about this time. I know I've gone over the not counting of the petition. I'm not going to revisit that again. I think that was a huge mistake, and it was probably done because you didn't want to count the additional votes for Ellen, which is shameful, to say the least. And I wanted to talk about something that was in, in one of the Boston Globe articles that quoting Dr. Laurie Hunter here. It says, this is what Dr. Hunter was quoted as saying, "I am absolutely for Ellen Garrison and all that she's done. I'd love to honor that because we're all about that work and the anti-racist work and the promoting of the diverse population in the community. But changing the name would mean disrupting," as she put it, "to the district's longstanding vision of, for the middle school. I've tried a lot over the last few months as this started to see if I could get myself there, and I just can't." And so I thought about this, and it really does not make a lot of sense to me. And I'll tell you why. This is not the changing of a school name. Concord currently has two middle schools, Peabody Middle School and Sandbourne Middle School. And it's been that way for quite some time. This is the naming of a new $104 million middle school. Combining returning students from the two existing middle schools into one larger new middle school in and of itself will unite the students and allow them to make more friends. There is no need for Concord to be in the new middle school's name to unite students. The only school with Concord in its name is Concord Carlisle, because it's a regional high school that enrolls students from two different towns. Now I'm going to talk about what happened at the May 21st meeting. School committee meeting is again searching for another compromise. Carrie Rankin proposed Ellen Garrison Concord Middle School. And she explained the process that had gotten her there. Right away, Alexa Anderson jumps in and proposes that they elevate Ellen Garrison by naming the building after her instead. It was obvious, there was no way this school committee chair would ever allow the school to be named after Ellen Garrison, because that is what would truly elevate Ellen Garrison to where she belongs.
Constance, thank you for your-
And I'm very glad to see Carrie here as the new chair. That makes me feel much more optimistic.
Thank you, thank you for, for voicing your, your comment. And we appreciate you coming out. But the three minutes is up, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Let me just see if anyone on the Zoom.
I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone. Is there anyone else in the room? Okay. Thank you very much. So we can move over to the CCHS student update.
So I see the, the students are online here with us. I'll do some introductions since we have so many new members tonight. So Felicity Zhang is on. Maddie, I see you're joining us. Maddie Clancy is one of your new reps, just voted in in the last week, Maddie, maybe, somewhere like that?
Congratulations.
I did see Zaria on. She may have had to get off as time went by. And I know Harry was there for a few minutes too. But you've got Felicity and Maddie ready to share out with you here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Zaria and Harry did have to leave today because they had something else at seven. But we have the presentation and, sorry, I'm just, can everyone see that? I don't usually screen share.
Yes.
All right. So our update this week is pretty short and sweet because we are wrapping up the end of the school year. So first, as Dr. Hunter mentioned, we had elections in the past week or so. And Maddie is our new school committee representative as Harry is graduating this year. So welcome, Maddie.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say hi really quickly. So as Felicity said, my name is Maddie Clancy, and I'm currently a sophomore at CCHS. And this year, I've really enjoyed being a student senator. And next year, I will be moving into the position of school committee representative that Harry- of school committee representative that Harry Carly held this year. And I'm just really looking forward to being involved and representing Concord Carlisle High School in future meetings. So, thanks.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, Maddie.
Thank you.
And this week was also senior week for CCHS, which was a lot of fun activities. I know if Harry was here, he could have spoke more, spoken more about that. But I believe there were some activities, including the PFTI Day of Service and a field trip to Kimball Farm. And there was also the awards night to recognize juniors and seniors. And that was a really great moment to kind of recognize the achievement of students, both academically and in terms of things like community service, character and leadership outside of just classes. And also last Thursday, we were welcoming, we're very much getting into preparing for next year. And we welcomed the incoming class of 2028, which to me is kind of scary because I'm actually going to be a senior next year, which is something that I thought was going to happen. But we helped tour the new eighth, gives the new ninth graders a tour of CCHS. And it was really great to kind of see some of the faces that are going to be joining our school community next year.
Yeah.
Okay. So to finish it up, seniors had their graduation last Saturday morning on Memorial Field. I was unable to attend because I was studying, but I heard a lot of positive comments, especially on the speakers, Ally Saunders and Faith Clark. So, yes, next up, sophomores at CCHS took session one of the Science MCAS today. And we're going to finish up tomorrow with session two, which will be our last MCAS ever, I think. So, that's okay.
Congratulations.
Never.
Thank you. So lastly, right now, students at CC are preparing for final exams, which will take place next week, Monday through Thursday. So, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for bearing with our agenda change.
Felicity, can I have like a one moment with you? So I heard through the grapevine about a project you did in your English class. And I'm not going, like, some sort of presentation you gave. I'm just going to say I didn't know where you live, but now I do. My mother lives on like an adjacent cul-de-sac to the cul-de-sac that you live on. And I am fascinated by, I think you gave a speech about some goings on in the neighborhood with respect to like the sickle. And it's like all anyone is talking about in the neighborhood. Apparently, you were unbelievably persuasive, piqued everyone's interest. I told my mom about it. And I kind of want to hear your essay one day. You might have to, I might have, you might have to send it to me if you haven't written down.
I would buy that sickle too. I want to hear this.
Yep. Well, Felicity has some theories.
The sickle on a ministerial.
A sickle. But anyway, you were the talk of the neighborhood whether you knew it or not. So, well done.
I have heard about her debate skills too.
There may be other members of the neighborhood in the, in the audience this evening. But anyway, I vote for an A on that project.
I did get a good grade. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Maddie, welcome aboard. You have big shoes to fill, but we have no doubt you'll fill them.
Yeah, thank you so much. I wish Harry could be here. I think this would be his last one. But
Yeah.
So, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night. All right.
All right.
We have some exciting, the next agenda item is pretty exciting. Recognition from the Concord Education Fund. Lori, I might turn this over to you.
Yeah, we'll invite them up to the table for sure. They're here to present this year's grant award. And, you know, having been able to work with them on the many amazing grants that the teachers have submitted, it's been really great to see some recovery post pandemic. It's been a slower road to get applications in from the staff. And this year, I think we're really all excited by the range of things that were submitted and about 25 grants are being awarded. So I'm going to turn it over to them and they can talk on process grants and the big check that we're really excited to see.
So, hi, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I know many of you are on the table, but I'm Jen Perry. And this is Mari Alexander, Bill Stone, and Greg Legault. Mari and I are co-presidents this year of the Ed Fund. And we're very excited to be here to present you guys with this check for $54,400.
Whoa.
Put the microphone down.
That's awesome.
Can we get a clean shot?
Yeah.
I'll get a better one.
So Bill's going to give you some more details and some more granularity on the grants. But this was the biggest, season, the best request that we've had in a really long time. And so we're very excited to have had so many grants come in and to be able to fund so many grants.
Thanks.
That's for our Zoom viewers.
We have some famous alumni in the room too.
Anyways, so I'm Bill Stone, co-chair with, with Greg of the Grants Committee of the Concord Ed Fund. First of all, we want to thank all of you because we partner with everyone in this room. And you guys do such a good job, especially this one over here. And we work, you know, hand to hand with principals, faculty, staff. We love what they do. We love the way they think. And we love getting these grants. So for those that don't know what we do, we basically fundraise in the community. We have some great sponsors. A lot of community members donate. All we really do, 18 volunteers, we go out, we get grants, we redeploy the capital to, basically to, to the students to enhance their experience, to fund innovative ways of learning. This year, as Jen said, we've got, we had 25 grants applicants in the past, I don't know, four years. The most we've had is 20. So it's, post COVID, it's really, it's really, it's picking up. Last year was our biggest year because we funded responsive learning, which it's awesome to hear, like, how it's going. This year, we awarded $54,000. The three main categories we've had over the last, like, three or four years, one main category is wellness, mental health, DEI. We've had a lot of grants there. We've had a lot in another category, what I call innovative and outdoor learning, like, just new ways to learn, both in, inside and outside of the classroom. And then the third one is just your, your typical, like, innovation, science, technology. So I can go into those grants a little bit more. But I'm really, we're extremely proud this year. We have all three elementary schools. We have the middle school. We have the high school. We have our high school. Two from Echo, one from Branch, one from Launch, and two or three from the preschool.
Awesome.
So like, that's why you have 25, right? So, anyway, it's been, it's been a really good year. Some of the really, really cool ones, I can't say enough about responsive learning. But in the, in the mental health, wellness, diversity category, we've got two from Echo. One is representation and identity formation that we, we really loved. We also have a couple of music therapy ones. One is for the CIP, one is for CIPS. The other one's for, like, the middle school, for That Viola Kid. No, it's for fourth grade, fourth grade. The Viola Guy, That Viola Kid, just some viola guy that's coming in and he's going to teach his kids how to play the violin. So go on thatviolakid.com and you'll see who he is. For outdoor and innovative learning, you know, the one we're really most excited about is the Teen Authors Festival. That's a CMS, CCHS kind of co-sponsored. And it's just bringing in, like, was it 15 authors that are going to kind of come in, work with the, excuse me, work with the kids. And then kind of, they're, they're going to have like a whole, like, festival carnival about it. So that's very exciting. The solar eclipse glasses was
Great. You set us up well. Yeah.
That was a huge hit.
Well, you guys kind of set us up well and I would say so. We, we love the, that impact was awesome.
And I think I've said this, but I don't think we under, I did not understand that if we didn't have glasses, my colleagues were keeping kids inside in other districts because they didn't have assurance. Can you imagine? We didn't have a lot of that. Didn't even cross our minds because this was so well supported. So.
And I did not know that Justin Cameron could thank someone so many times. Every single communication was like, thank you to the Ed Fund. So, that was really nice.
Another one that's really, I'm an accountant, so I don't understand this one, but it's a mini PCR thermal cycler, which is a genetic analysis tool.
Oh, I read this one. I don't know either.
None of us met. So Greg's wife's a scientist and she had to, like, interpret for us. So, like, yeah, we think it's really cool.
Yeah. I was Googling on that one.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of a flavor of, of some of the ones that we, we're doing. There's some stuff with the, you know, the radio station, things like that. There's a lot more authors and, like, Malum Poehler has a world language person coming in, like, a lot more of that type of learning. So it's been a good year.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Don't undersell yourself. I mean, the work of the Ed Fund, it's a ton of work. What they won't tell you is they usually run a party. They also just did the graduation balloons. They had almost 300 balloons that came out of Jen Perry's house. Nobody will tell you this, but they drive around Concord, putting balloons at graduates' houses and Carlisle and Boston. They do all three. We've seen them everywhere. You've seen them everywhere. So don't undersell yourselves. And without the Ed Fund, I mean, it is really for new and innovative ideas. Then sometimes those go into the budget and then the budget supports that.
We do pilot a lot of things.
Yep. You pilot a lot of things.
Yeah.
I mean, we heard about Q5.
Q5.
Five, I think, is one of the more interesting things.
That's the first thing I thought. They're going to be calling.
And I will say the other thing is at graduation, you had a big shout out from the co-principals on, you know, really what the Ed Fund has given to the high schools. So the principals absolutely have an understanding of what's happening and even the evolution. It really was, you know, teachers really coming up with the ideas. But now I think the principals, the leadership team is also involved, which is
They're involved, but the, the teachers are who's coming up with the ideas, which I think is so exciting. And especially, as you can hear, the through lines to the school improvement plans and the strategic plan. It's teachers really finding ways to, to bring those things to life. So yes, we insist on being involved and aware and supportive, but so much of it's growing organically.
Really, the, the collaboration between teachers, the admin team, the Ed Fund, I mean, it's really been exceptional. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Happy to do it. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Are you going to leave that with me?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
You want a formal picture?
Stay by my office.
Let's get a better picture.
Yeah, let's get a better picture.
Yeah. You should get, you should get. You should get in, Lori.
Yeah, you get in.
You get in, Lori. Oh, you get in.
You did.
I'll take it. All right. Yeah, because they were kind of sitting awkwardly.
You girls dressed for the picture.
Exactly. Yeah. Well, Dee's always thinking.
Hey, you want to get in?
There you go. There you go.
That's great.
There we go. I think Bob, I have a better angle.
You got it?
Yeah.
Wait, who's they're looking at?
Awesome.
I think it's probably the slide.
Have a good night.
Oh, totally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, these are healthy. Great.
Better than that.
Yeah.
These are awesome.
We have, next is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone from the committee would like to remove? I'll start with that. If not, I would entertain a motion to move the consent agenda as written in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
The only thing we say to our new chairs is, I think, going forward, we should have two separate agendas because it seems awkward for Carlisle members to vote on Concord items for next time.
Okay, fair enough.
Just a comment.
Two separate consent agendas?
Right. One for Concord.
We've been, we've been voting.
I know.
But, but you could say I for region, I for both.
Let's just separate.
Yeah, we can do that moving forward. It's a great, it's, it's a good, good pickup. All right. So for tonight, though, do we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Can new members vote on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
You can choose to abstain, but
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we were good.
Yep.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Correspondence. I think if we're not mistaken, we have
I think there were four to the region. I don't know. It's hard to tell.
Zero to, I think zero to
Sorry, zero, CPS, four to CPS on, on the middle school and a congratulations note to Andrew on his election. So congratulations, Andrew.
Great. And there was zero to the region. So we can move on to the next, which is, we have our superintendent chairs and liaisons reports. I think the best way for us to do this is Tracy and Alexa, we might hand it over to you to do the chairs because we're, obviously, I don't have very many. We're not on either. And then Lori will have you do.
Last 15 minutes, we have, no.
So I know we're kind of throwing this on you, but do you want to have Lori go first?
Sure.
Oh, sure. Happy to. So I have, just have a few updates. Obviously, the headline has been graduation over the last weekend. And as the students so eloquently said, it was just a fabulous morning. It's always nice when the weather cooperates, but it's so much more than that. It's in my own head echoing. And so we're just really glad it went so well.
Thank you.
Oh, much better. Thank you. I think, I want to give you an update in public on the assistance, interim assistant superintendent of teaching and learning search. We have a finalist. We'll be talking about that in executive session. So I think we're very close and very excited about that. In terms of the middle school and the name of the middle school, we've been really trying to start to brand that. So Mr. Cameron, when he met with the fifth grade parents, even named it as welcoming them to the Ellen Garrison Building at Concord Middle School. So we're really building it into our, our semantics and our routines. I've been in, been in conversation with the construction team and making sure we're talking about the signage, which hasn't begun yet. So they know that they need to work with me on how to make sure that Ellen's name is really prominent in the sign and given its due time. You know, obviously, we're gearing up for a busy summer here. We have a number of summer programs happening across multiple schools. ESY, the Special Education Summer Program, will open at Alcott on the 24th. We have Case Collaborative Summer Program housed at Willard. That'll be coming up in a few weeks after the Fourth of July. We've added, and everything, most of what Mr. Lucy mentioned in terms of our newcomers is grant funded because the state's actually funded that adequately. Now they're including some additional summer funds, which is good because we started to plan a summer program. So we're collaborating with Concord Rec for the older kids. So grades two and up are going to camp for, on scholarships. Grade one is doing halftime at Willard in a morning program and halftime at camp. And the incoming K, which is probably one of our most exciting notes, given what we learned over the last year, the incoming K will be spending the mornings at Willard all summer long. And many of them have been at our preschool programs, either here at Ripley, or I'm going to a preschool graduation in the PlaySpace on Thursday
That's great.
With the volunteers. So we're really, you know, serving, serving those students quite well. In addition to that, we'll have some small summer programs. The middle school will reunite us why in the late part of the summer. Pathways and, mostly pathways and Launch will run at the beginning and end of the summer, slightly different schedules at the high school. So we're, lots of kids around, which is really great. In terms of facilities projects, and we'll certainly talk more on this next week as we really, you know, focus in on the launch into the rest of June, July, and August. Thoreau has no programs on it because the HRU, the ERU units are finally here after many years of attempts to get this done. So there'll be a lot of extensive work going on over there. That's crane involved and otherwise. So we wanted to make sure that were no children there. Otherwise, the other big, exciting project that Bob's working on with Russ and team is the retail space over next to CVS and putting together the improvements that need to be done. And we're in the bid process there. And I'm just really excited about what that's going to turn into. So we need a name. Angel's got a list in her office. So I think that's probably one of the projects over the summers to hone in on what we're going to call it. That's great.
My nomination's
You have a nomination already. So we'll, we'll get back to you. So those are the highlights. It's really busy and a great time of year too with all the celebrations and festivities.
Wonderful.
Sort of CPS, Dee's here. And I mentioned earlier
And I think that, so Dee and Pat Geyer will be our liaisons to the school committee. And then on the Carlisle side, I think that Victor said he was going to continue on to liaise with us. So that would be something to just check in with Victor on. I think, Lori, the highlight was definitely graduation. Congratulations Domingos, who gave his son his diploma. It was pretty awesome, I have to say. And it was great, right? I mean, like, there's nothing better than that. I did it last year with my son. It was great. It was, I mean, the day was really exceptional. And if you haven't had a chance to look at the speeches, definitely watch those speeches. I mean, it's, Lori's was all about her why, what the kids' why was. And it just was I mean, it's, Lori's was all about her why, what the kids' why was, and it just was, I mean, everyone had to have seen themselves in your speech. I have to say, yours is the one that, I remember your speech. And of course, Faith was crying and I felt terrible for Faith when she thanked her parents. But it was, it was really great, the student voice and the administrator's voice and just really, I mean, there is a commitment to the strategic plan that came out through the speeches. Not, I mean, it is intentional, but I mean, I'm sure you wrote your speeches not thinking like, "Oh, I better include the strategic plan." Like, it just, it just is so natural and organic. It just came through the speeches.
It's ubiquitous at this point, yeah.
Yeah, so I encourage you all to watch that. And it was just, it was a great day. It was a great group. I've heard great things about All Night Live. They had...
I hear nothing about All Night Live.
Exactly. It was great. It was all great. Senior week was great. You know, Cynthia, I thought of you when they're talking about senior week. Cynthia and I might have worked on senior week for 2018 together, and it's all the same stuff. It's Kimball's, it's, well, now it's Six Flags instead of Cannibee, so. But I think they had a great senior week, so just really a great week up at the high school. I did go to the DEI Commission meeting last week. I continued to liaise with them and they were kind of processing through our meeting last week. And, yeah, and I would say just to meet with, I would meet with the chairs of, I've met with the select board chair, but maybe meet with the chairs of the select board in Concord and Carlisle, FinCom, Concord, Carlisle, and just kind of do the whole circuit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I read it in your 30, 60, 90-day plan, so thank you for, again. Going back to the foundational setup that you both did, we really appreciate it. It's not for nothing, so. It's a good, good tool. I'm already in the works, so Lori's been helping me.
Perfect.
I'm sure the same for Brian, so we're gonna get this going.
Yeah, everything's on the drive.
Yeah.
It's like our answer to everything. It's on the drive.
It's on the drive.
If you, if you're good at Google Drive, you will be a raging success on this committee. If you are not great at Google Drive, ask a lot of questions.
Learn it.
I love the shared drives, too. Like, I don't, I don't always like when it's like the shared with me folders, but the shared drives, I'm like, oh, I can see everything right here. So that's really been a game changer.
The way that you two designed it is so intuitive that it really is, like, when you say it's on the shared drive, like, it actually is easy to find. It's not like you're just searching for, through someone's brain on how they might organize it.
And you can't always create shared drives in personal Google accounts. It's, because it's a, you know, a school account. That's why. So, because I've tried to create shared drives in my own personal one, and I can't do it. And then I had to ask my friends at Google, and that's why.
All right, well, that's great. Thank you, both, or all three of you, I should say. So I think the next we have...
I have a couple of things.
Their liaisons.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I missed that. Yep, thank you.
So first of all, Concord has kicked off their Pride Month with quite a full program. I have to, I was at the select board meeting last night. I'm a bit disappointed. They got sort of bogged down in flag raising and sort of didn't really celebrate all the wonderful events that are in Concord and Carlisle. We did have an unfortunate event in Concord, I mean, Carlisle with the theft of those signs, which have been replaced very quickly, so, but it tells, there's still work to be done. So look at the, it's either go to Visit Concord or there's another site. But Visit Concord takes you to the list of events and it's, it goes all month long. The other thing is, I keep forgetting to ask you, Lori. So we had our final meeting of the sustainability group, and they've done a lot of amazing things. So if you could forward Priscilla's presentation to the rest of the committee...
She passed that along, so it's in my, already queued up in my email to all of you over the weekend.
Excellent. So please read that. There's just like incredible things going on at every elementary school, at the middle school, and at the high school. I mean, she's just done a tremendous job, as have all of a bunch of people, volunteers, so check it out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I knew I would mess something up, so. Any other liaisons?
I will say in terms of the liaisons, that was always our challenge as to like how to manage reports and the length and all of that, so.
Yeah, that's why it's good to see it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Learn it. And I will say just a quick comment to you. The flags in Carlisle were replaced and I think they came back with even more. So it's more than 200 now. I think it's closer to 250, so.
That's awesome.
It's a great sign of support. It means a lot to me personally, so. Okay, so going now to the action items. Oh, discussion? Did I miss that?
The handbook.
The handbook.
That's what, yeah, oh, sorry, that's what I was looking at.
We end up listing them twice, which you go...
That's what I did. I skipped.
Chair can decide if you like that we do it in discussion and then again as the action.
Yeah, I had it here, sorry.
Either way.
Either way.
Because they're both, oh, yeah, we don't have to vote on the school committee schedule.
Correct.
Either way, it's still the handbook.
We have the handbook. That's what we have to do, so I know you were gonna cover the handbook.
Yeah, I'll open that up for discussion. Just a little bit of storytelling here. In the past, we've been bringing a K5 handbook, a middle school handbook, and a high school handbook. And we have named for the last few years at least that all three handbooks were just in need of pretty massive cleanup. And it had been a goal of ours to get that cleanup done. What evolved over the year, because DESI, we had a coordinated program review, and the handbook's front and center to DESI as they do that work. And the more we learned and what they needed us to update and talked on how we were gonna get to where it needed to be, it became really clear that one master handbook was a better way to go. Obviously differentiated as needed in a few spots, but DESI was very supportive of that and actually provided us some of the models. So there's been a lot of vetting of this. It's not just us saying, "Let's just collapse it all together." So I worked extensively with the principals. We did a lot of extensive research to look at both other models online, take what DESI had given us as feedback, make sure that all the other sources and, you know, found the best of what was in the old handbooks and didn't abandon those. So what you have feels really, really good to us. It's been a long time coming. All the policies are updated finally. We have one master document to keep updated, which feels much more manageable. I know one question you might have is about discipline and the code of conduct. By law, you can't define the consequence to a student behavior. We can only put ranges of behavior or suggested behavior, consequences. It really, it has to be taken by law on a very individual basis. So this we borrowed from Newton where they highlight what is gonna be a mandatory versus possible consequence. We liked that. That seemed like enough differentiation right off the bat to help communicate to families that if something happens, if it says there's a mandated consequence, then that's a prescribed action that will happen. What that will be is still principal's discretion. But we liked having that range and some of the ways we were doing it in the other books just didn't feel, feel like they were all that effective and were pretty messy, so. We felt, we're really excited by this, believe it or not, and thinking a handbook could be exciting, but it's much more where it needs to be and gonna be much more manageable going forward. So I'm happy to take any questions.
I think it's a lot easier to read.
Isn't it?
Than three separate ones. That, it's just, I think it's such an improvement, so I support the change.
Thank you.
Other than like administrative updates, I really, I think it looks great on our...
Right, so what they're gonna do, because we talked a lot about this, the handbook's had a lot of informational stuff in them. So what they're gonna do at the building level is find a way to do that. We think the new website is gonna be a really key, important place for that because to have like the lunch scheduled in the middle of the handbook, one, nobody knew where to find it. And two, there's another way to do that much more effectively. So culling that all out felt really smart in so many, so many ways.
So just a comment, I think almost every other school around us, especially high school, there's 30, chapter 37H, I think it says, in nine through 12 schools will have handbooks. So I know we, guess we slide into this with this. On the other hand, I do...
We're fine to go with this. We've got DESI's blessing on this.
Let me finish. So I do think, though, it's important to have a one-stop shop, especially for the high school, especially with our Carlisle students coming in, especially with new students coming in, where they don't think this is where they're gonna find all the information. I know the principals will be intentional about doing that, so they don't have to go here for parking and there for this and there for that, you know, it's just, it's important, it's a lot of information to take in. And we have to be very clear that this isn't the place to get all that information. The other thing is there are some typos in the table of contents. I just noticed.
Send those to me before it goes out.
But it is a big change, especially I think for the high school, less so, I think, for the elementary because then, you know, they have a, you do this for parking at this elementary school. So it probably lends itself better to the elementary level, maybe a little bit to the, but I think, I feel like the high school is just, it's a lot for families, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna find more effective ways to communicate what you're referencing than where it was kind of buried in here. And it wasn't really searchable and so I think...
You can't really modify it that easily. You're like, "Oh, we're gonna change the handbook you just read." And everything is changing, so.
Send me any edits if you caught typos. We've looked at it so much, we don't see them anymore.
That happens.
Do parents have to sign this, like?
Yeah, technically, there's a sign off in Aspen they're supposed to do every fall. We chase people, I won't say we don't, but there is a sign off in Aspen that they have to click that they've read and received.
Should they do that elementary, too, or no? We could do elementary, okay.
It's in Aspen, yeah.
Yep.
That's great. I liked it, and I liked all the, I love all the policy throughout it, too. I think that that's good to have it all in one spot, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and really researching handbooks, most of what a handbook is, is taking the important policies you all do and putting it more front and center, so it does.
That's the purpose of policy.
Which makes it really important they're updated, so. Now we'll be able to do that. Yeah, moving.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
So the third item under discussion is the 2425 draft school committee schedule. I don't know how you all historically have covered this, but is there feedback? Is there...
Yeah, so Lori sent out the draft schedule that Erin put together, I think. I don't really have any, I feel like, I kind of wonder if we could table this until next week, just to let...
People see the schedule.
People see it and think about it, and then also let us kind of think about, I don't know, it and other things.
Yeah, my only feedback that I had prior to the schedule was, we had talked about this last year, that Tuesday meeting of Thanksgiving week was always super challenging. So I was like, "No Tuesday during Thanksgiving week." That was pretty much the only feedback that I brought before the schedule was drafted. So if you see anything else on there, I think there's one December meeting.
That was my only thing with respect to the budget, managing that, but...
We have to, we don't know about town meeting this year?
Right, town meeting could be in June.
Wait, what?
Yeah, like, town meeting is like, in June. And actually, it didn't seem like from their discussion last night at the select board that there were really other, any other viable options other than June, unless they looked to take May, like, take the CCHS off the table and look elsewhere. But I didn't seem like that was viable and it didn't seem like they wanted April. And it seemed like, unless something really drastically changed, my takeaway was I'd be willing to bet some money that we're looking at June 2nd for a start date.
Yeah, so gotta shift things a little bit.
Oh, yeah, so it will shift the timetable, hopefully. Yeah, actually, that's a significant shift.
Yeah, that's a whole month, yeah.
But you think about even the setup of a June, of a Monday town meeting, they actually can't set up till Sunday?
Yeah, which will be... I've been involved in the, in the whole time. Carmen's been really collaborative. I mean, you might want to go with December 3rd and 17th. I can't imagine a December without two meetings, given the budget pace that even with a later town meeting, we're still bringing you budgets, so.
So I think maybe that would be the ask, right, to go through it, make notes, bring them if you, you know, so we can go through this and iron it out.
Maybe email them, email them so that we can come with a new proposal for next week.
That would be great.
So Thanksgiving is late this year.
Yeah.
And Carrie, you might need to do a little footwork. I do think we're gonna need a summer CPS meeting to do some capital planning work.
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I...
Policy.
I think probably we will send an email about summer schedules and, yeah.
You can zoom it.
And then also like liaison requests and stuff like that, so, in the next...
And then just a couple of things. There's two, there's three bodies that have us as members and not just liaisons, which is the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, the PEG Access Committee, and the...
Adult and Community Ed.
Adult and Community Ed.
Okay.
So those are two, well, I'm on FAAAC, I'm on PEG. I'm supposedly staying on till the end of my term, so you don't, maybe just don't worry about that one. And then we have an opening at Adult and Community Ed.
And at the, and financial audit, do we discuss that that has to be one?
Two.
It has to be two people, so we do need a replacement for that.
Was that Court? Okay.
That'll be on the master list, which we're gonna bring next week.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring all of that next week. And we will send an email asking if you have any like thoughts, requests, whatnot.
And I think it would be good to have a separate workshop.
For what?
For...
For the, oh, you mean over the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 right. So that, that will be about summer availability.
Good, thank you.
And I think the best thing about, you know, having a bunch of new folks is obviously we're, you know, in a public meeting, we don't have a chance to have, I'll say, a lot of niceties, but I think understanding everyone's interests and expertise would be really great to get to know. Just because, like you said, there are a number of different committees and different things, so. It'd be great to understand that. Okay, so we'll send a message out. It's the fourth. We have one on the 11th. We'll get a note out asking for feedback by a certain time.
Okay.
All right, so moving to action items, so I know we had, had on the agenda to vote, to approve the 2425 student handbook. Are we comfortable doing that even with slight typos?
I think so. It's just the TS table of contents, yeah.
Okay, great. So can I have a motion to approve the approval of the 2425 student handbook?
I moved, or I move to approve the 2425 student handbook.
I seconded.
All in, discussion?
Thank you for the work.
Yeah. It seems like a minor thing, like, but it's a huge project.
Huge.
It was a big project.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we have a vote to approve the CEF grants for 2024.
That was great to hear about.
Yes, and I think I'm gonna have you add the amount.
I think we need the amount in there.
We have to accept the donation of $54,470.
Check the check.
Seventy, okay.
$470.
So I move that we accept the Concord Education Fund grant of $54,470.
So moved.
Second? Thank you, Concord Ed Fund.
Yeah, discussion, yeah, all in favor. That was wonderful, yeah.
You're amazing.
On record how grateful we are for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we are now going to move to executive session, I believe, right? Is there anything else?
Our version of All Night Live.
Yeah, someone should read it.
I move that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of open meeting law to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and the superintendent. And under purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the CCTA and the CCHS building service workers and not to return to open session.
Anderson, aye.
We have to roll call into executive session.
Oh, God, there's a new alphabet.
New alphabet.
Marano, aye.
Oh, you guys are good.
You.
Aye.
Rank and, rank and aye.
Viola, aye.
Waters, an aye.
Have to get used to this.
And I will also move that the Concord School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Concord Teachers Association and the CPS building service workers and not to return to open session.
Second.
Anderson, aye.
I'll check, aye.
Marano, aye.
Randy, aye.
Rank and aye.
Viola, aye.
Nope.